He's laying in the back.
Back there saying bye-bye.
All right?
We have a certificate of recognition. Lori, you've been with us for 30 years. In grateful appreciation of your loyal and dedicated service, 1990 to 2020. Thank you, Lori. Yes. Presentations and reports. Carl, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I have a handout for you. It's not in your packet. Pass it out to you if I could. And here, I'll make my comments brief. And I'm really pleased to see everyone here hear about Northern Lakes Medical Mental Health. I'm here because I want to alert you to something that's very serious and possibly could have serious consequences for our public mental health system, of which Northern Lakes is the community mental health services program that provides services here in Wexford County, in Isaki County, in Grand Traverse, in Lelandale, in Ross Common, and Crawford. The package I gave you, and I'm only going to touch on three pages in the PowerPoint presentation, but as a beginning comment, you may have remembered hearing about Section 298 of the Governor's Budget. And it's been in there for the last couple of years. And what 298 did was set up pilot programs that would take the public mental health money and in certain counties, run it through a Medicaid health plan, Medicaid HMO. Some of those are private entities. Some of those are publicly traded entities and are very different than the public mental health system that we have that is deeply rooted in our counties. I'm here because I want to alert you to this. It's very concerning. The Director of the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services unleashed this plan in December. 298 fortunately died with the Governor's veto because it wasn't going to work running public mental health money through these private health plans to try and integrate physical and behavioral health care. Now, we all agree that that's an admirable goal because we should be able to take care of both the physical side of a person as well as their mental health issues. So we totally agree with that. When 298 expired, we were all happy. We breathed a sigh of relief for about 15 seconds. And then what we got was 298 on steroids. We've got a major proposal that would potentially disrupt the public mental health system. And I'll take you to the handout. You just go to page four. This document is raised with comments and red, which we inserted into this presentation that was given by the Director of the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. This slide shows how the system works today. For people who have mild to moderate behavioral health issues, they receive those as well as their physical health care through a Medicaid health plan. Medicaid health plans cover, unfortunately, only 75% of people who are on Medicaid. 25% of the people on Medicaid are not affiliated with one of these plans and receive their service on a fee-for-service basis. On the right-hand side, we have the CMHs, the Public Mental Health Systems. And for people who have significant mental illness, intellectual developmental disabilities, co-occurring mental health substance use disorder problems, they receive their physical health care from one of these Medicaid health plans and the Specialty Behavioral Health Services through our system. At the bottom, you'll see safety net and community benefits. And when you start tinkering with the public mental health system, you start jeopardizing that public safety net because we are part of the community. We are affiliated with the counties. The Medicaid health plans are not. They don't have the linkage with you. I mean, we have Ben Townsend as the Commissioner, who serves on our board. So you know what we're doing. And we know what people in Wexford County and the public officials are thinking and wanting and identifying as issues. That's in jeopardy of being lost in this new scheme. So let me fast forward you to page 10, if I could. So what the state's proposing is that, yes, they want a strong public safety net. We all do. Not sure in this new plan what's going to happen to the safety net because when you start adjusting the funding and making changes, then you jeopardize it. Because what we do is we work with other community agencies to try to strengthen that safety net. Not only deal with mental health issues, but the social determinants of health, housing, transportation, so forth. Other component of the plan is to have specialty integrated plans. They're called SIPs. And this concept is being proposed as the only way that the state wants to look at redesigning the program, the public mental health system, with the goal of, you know, better lives for people and so forth. No one can disagree with trying to improve people's lives. The mechanism here is the problem. And even going farther back, some of the assumptions that they made in doing this proposal were the following. That the public mental health system is financially unstable, that we're not accountable, that we don't provide services, that we're not monitored sufficiently, which is all totally wrong premises that I totally disagree with. They also think that this kind of massive systematic change is the only way to go. The Director even said incremental change is a step backwards. Now, if you have a good goal and you have a good plan in mind, you're making incremental change. In my mind, there's nothing wrong with that. That's good policy. That's good planning. That's good implementation. So if you go to page 11, what this future model is, is that nothing will change for the Medicaid health plan. They'll continue to do what they do for people with mild to moderate behavioral health needs. And they'll take care of both sides. What they're saying for people who have significant, serious mental illness, that we'll have to form multiple SIPs, specialty integrated plans, that people will need to choose from. And while we continue to agree that integrating physical and behavioral health care is something that we all work towards, and we are actually doing that now, working towards it, that if we were to say, they wanted to first have statewide SIPs, so it was going to be covering the whole state. And then they've gotten some feedback and said, well, maybe we'll consider regional SIPs. So here's one example of a serious issue. If you have multiple SIPs in a region and say they'd let us have control of one of these SIPs, but you have other SIPs that are controlled by Medicaid health plans, are controlled by provider networks, by other combinations, what you're doing is you're diluting the public mental health funds over several entities. So how is that all going to work? How are the providers going to contract with all of these different SIPs? There's some illusion that this is going to create new providers. That's not the case. We try very hard to make sure we have robust provider networks, but it's not easy. There are not a lot of people out there who want to take care of some of the most vulnerable people in the state of Michigan. So we're constantly looking at a provider network. So I want to just leave by saying that this has a potential for great disruption and has a potential for us losing the close relationship and accountability we have to you as county commissioners in one of the six counties that we are responsible for. And it also has potential catastrophic effect on this safety net. We work very hard, taking all the funding we get, to make sure there is this safety net. Our crisis services, for example, are available to anyone in the county. You don't have to have a serious mental illness to call our crisis line. Anybody in this, in the audience, who has a family crisis or a job change, whatever, you define if you're in crisis, and you can call that number. You don't have to have a serious mental illness to do that. So that's something that we offer as a community benefit. We do our My Strength app that we offer. We try to do work with housing organizations, with aging organizations, and so forth. So we form this safety net in our community. Now, you take the relationship that we have with you and you put it in Lansing, or you put it somewhere else, you're going to lose that local control. And that's not good for the people we serve and for your constituents and the citizens of your county. So I just wanted to alert you of this. And one other fact is that when they set up, they set up five public forums. Four in person and one virtual online. That was February 6. And we actually participated in that. We invited people to come to our four offices. And I was very gratified that we had consumers, family members, providers who came to those meetings to be able to see what this presentation was about and to give the state feedback. The only thing missing in here was that they forgot our 21 counties when they set up these face-to-face public forums. It's like, wait a minute. We sort of would jump from Saginaw to the UP, but you kind of forgot about us. So we actively advocated it. It's going to be one engraeling tomorrow. Now, that's one engraeling for an hour and a half. So I'm hopeful that the state will take the feedback that they've received from all over the state and take a step back and slow this down because you see towards the end here, they want all this accomplished by October of 2022. Now, that is a lot of change in a very short period of time. So I wanted you to be aware of this. We'll be providing more information as this goes along. Hopefully, the state will take the feedback that people have been giving them and do something that's more measured, that's more thoughtful, and less potentially disruptive to the system.
Thank you for asking questions.
Mr. Chair, could I add something? I've overseen and watched the budget. Everything that Carl and all of his people do for the last year, they have an incredible system that works with ours. They're local people and they reach thousands of people every year. And they meet the needs in every area, veterans all across the board. It's not broken. It works great. And they're trying to combine that with a broken system to help fix their broken system and then send that to the state and be run by the state, not by the local people. And if I could just boil it down from just a layman's viewpoint, that's how I see it, Carl. And it upsets me to no end that Lansing wants to grab everything, especially all the, we give them money and they pull out other from the state and from the federal to run what they run, and they do it very effectively. And so let's not break something by combining with something that's already broken. You don't fix something unless you have to. So, much as thanks, Carl.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
We'll open the floor to public comment. Could you just state your name and address? You're speaking on behalf of the group?
Yes.
My name's Seb Fogarty. 362 East 32 Road, Boone. I come before you tonight to ask that you, the Board of Commissioners for Wexford County, pass the resolution as written, making Wexford County a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. In doing so, we will be the 16th Michigan County to become a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. The Second Amendment is a right, not a right given to us by our government, but by our creators that is stated in the Constitution of the United States. We ask that you reaffirm your oath to protect the Constitution and our rights from all enemies, both foreign and domestic. There are some in our government that are systematically chipping away at our rights. And if we don't stand up and say enough is enough, they'll continue to pass laws to try to limit our rights and our freedoms. Those very freedoms that so many have fought and even died for, so that we may remain free, included in the honor of my forefathers. I have had a family member in every war in this country. From my great times four grandfather, George Taylor, and Hiram Blackburn in the Revolutionary War, to Hiram Harrison and Solomon Hurley in the War of 1812. In the Civil War, I had a great-great-grandfather on one side and uncles on the other. A great uncle was in World War I. Both of my grandfathers in World War II. I had an uncle in the Korean War, a cousin in Vietnam, a brother in the Iran hostage situation, a cousin in Desert Storm, cousin in Iraq, cousin in Afghanistan, all fighting the war on terror. And to date, I have a nephew in the National Guard waiting to see if and where he will deploy. There is a bill in the state legislature for a red flag law. These red flag laws do not protect us. They do not make us safer. They infringe upon our rights, not just our Second Amendment right to bear arms, but also our Fourth, Fifth, and Fourteenth Amendment rights by taking our guns without due process. If a complaint is filed, i.e. someone says, hey, she's a danger, they would take my guns first and ask questions later. It would be up to me to prove that I am not a danger to get my guns back and therefore my Second Amendment rights back, all while being left unable to protect myself or my family. This is not right. We ask that you adopt this resolution as written and pledge to uphold your oath to protect the rights of the United States Constitution. We realize that this is a non-binding resolution. This is symbolic. But let us all remember, the flag that we pledge allegiance to is a symbol of the country. A marriage certificate is a symbol of matrimony. And that the Constitution is a document that is a symbol to all, that we as a country hold dear and form our beliefs in as to how to govern this republic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also have a copy of the letter I believe you guys received from Michelle Battinga, supporting this movement. I also have several pages of signatures. If you would like a copy, I can provide them or if you'd like to see them. We have 391 signatures in support of the resolution.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Not seeing anybody else come forward at this time. We'll close public comment. Move on to consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support. We have a motion and support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes nine zero. We're right into Agenda Items. J1, Resolution 2005.
Motion to approve Resolution 20-05, Resolution to declare Wexford County to be Second Amendment Sanctuary County.
Support.
We have second lots of support. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Benjali?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Bevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, that motion passes nine zero. Moving right along, Agenda Item J2, Resolution 20-06.
Motion to approve Resolution 20-06, Cadillac Wexford Transit Authority 2020 Milledge Resolution.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Bush?
Yes.
Bevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjali?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. Agenda Item J3, Resolution 20-07.
Motion to approve Resolution 20-07, Resolution to approve the DNR project agreement for the Wex Capital Improvements.
We have a motion and support. Discussion?
This came out of building in Rockland. I just want to reaffirm that no money is coming out of our pockets for this.
Thank you. Any further? Roll call, please.
Bevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjali?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. Agenda Item J4, Request for a Public Hearing.
Motion to hold a public hearing on the DNR grant application for the Cadillac Pathway Single Track Project at the BLC meeting on March 4, 2020, and to advertise a public hearing in the Cadillac News beginning February 2020.
Support. We have a motion, support. Questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjali?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. Agenda Item J5, 2020 Revised Monumentation Plan.
Motion to approve the 2020 Revised Monumentation and Remonumentation Plan for Wexford County and authorize the Chairman to sign the plan on behalf of the county.
Your motion is for Laura.
I just wanted to let you know that this plan is in front of you, revising the 1992 Remonumentation Plan. That's when the county first went into this program with the state. And we've been receiving monies every year to keep this program growing, going, monumenting all the corners in our county. We're about two-thirds the way done. The plan is, I did send it in to our, to Mr. Barger, who is the Director of the Office of Land and Survey and Remonumentation. And he did pre-approve the plan. And it just establishes local control and consistency. That's why we have to do it in our own county. And it brings it up to date, modifying it for recent technologies for all the corners, submitting them electronically and stuff to the state instead of all by paper, so.
Any questions for Lori?
No, thank you, Lori.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjali?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. Agenda Item J6, Monumentation Surveyor Agreements.
Motion?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the two monumentation surveyor agreements, which are Atwell and CC Land in the amount of $37,400 each, perform professional services in accordance with Act 345 of 1990 and authorize the Chairman to sign the agreements on behalf of the county.
Support. We have a motion and support, Lori.
These are the surveyor agreements for the grant that we received from the state this year in the amount of $42,737. Just passed out a map that was provided by the county surveyor, who's Craig Pollan. And he couldn't be here tonight with us. But those are, shows the locations of all the corners we have currently, the years we have accomplished them, and what's in the future. So he likes to give you color-coded maps so you can visually see what we're doing.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Probert?
No.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjali?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Bevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
No.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes A1. Agenda Item J8, Prosecutor's Request for a Part-Time Clerk.
Motion to approve the prosecutor hiring an additional part-time deputy clerk for the prosecutor's office, a Level 4 position with a $16,060 per 10 months of wages and associated costs to be transferred from the general fund failing and revise the employee roster according to.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjali?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Bevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
No.
Musta?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes A1. Agenda Item J9, Maintenance Department Payable Approval.
Motion to approve the bid provided by Burger Chevrolet, the My Deal vendor for the state, in the amount of $39,032 for 2020 Chevrolet Silverado vehicle for the maintenance department and authorize the county administrator to develop and sign a purchase order for this vehicle.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Discussion?
Benjali?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Bevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjali?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Bevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Benjali?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. Agenda Item J10, Consulting Services Agreement.
Motion to approve the consulting service agreement between Wexford County Veterans Service Office, Catholic Services Incorporated, for a mental health council and authorize the Chairman to sign the agreement on behalf of Wexford County.
We have a motion and support. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Bush?
Yes.
Bevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend? Benjaly?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. Agenda Item J11, IT Right Service Contract.
Motion to approve the revised IT Right Service Contract, Option 1, from January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2023, and authorize the chairman to sign the contract on behalf of the county.
Support.
Motion and support, discussion. Roll call, please.
Devoe?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjaly?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Devoe?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
No.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjaly?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Devoe?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. Committee of the whole.
Motion to form a committee of the whole for the purpose of discussing the Central Dispatch 911.
Support. Roll call, please.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjaly?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Devoe?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, we are in the committee of the whole.
Bob? I gave you all your reports for this one. We had a meeting this morning with Dean Frey, the architect, and also the general contractor, Ken Marshall, Ken Marshall Construction. The purpose of the meeting was to do the punch list and the final stuff, and that was the main reason that the building didn't get turned over, although there were a couple reasons. You want to do a punch list so that they can document any little things or stuff in the drywall and take care of that, so it's all done, so that they can't come back to say, well, this was done and that was done, and you were moving furniture in and all that, and that's right, so they want it all done in terms, when they turn it over. The other reason it wasn't turned over was because of the backup power. Their emergency light is all provided with a generator that has to be up and operational before they can turn it over. That's supposed to be done and inspected tomorrow and go online, so the county should expect to get their certificate of occupancy right, so you can take the building over, and everything's coming along pretty nice on the building, and there'll be some things in the spring when the weather permits to finish up outside, but the inside of the building is pretty much 100%. Any questions?
I just want to compliment you on the great job you did as our contractor overseeing this.
Never told me the tale.
Well, it was fun out. You did a great presentation.
We appreciate it.
You got a projected opening date.
I don't know. You had an open house plan or something?
Yeah, March 12.
March 12.
Any questions for Bob?
No, thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob, very much.
Motion to rise and report the findings of the committee of the whole. Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're back in regular session, and that ends our agenda items. The administrators report.
I apologize for the lack of people gingers and packets. I have a short staff today, this next little excuse will not have been given. Little follow-up on the January 31st 911 outage. I got the board information, and we have to quote correctly. Three and a half hour outage was from a partially failed piece of redundant equipment that sent out corrupted information, causing additional failures and creating a feedback loop that ARPFNs fan with. So if you understand what it is. It's kind of like, I think, what happened here on January 7th. We had to issue the shutdown of courthouse service and phones, so kind of like something got hooked up wrong and everything flew, but there you go. Little more information on the census. We got an email a couple weeks ago from the census folks asking us to confirm the county and local unit boundaries, which I thought was kind of strange, but some of the Joe was, some of the Sarah Mertz are GAS specialists, and they go, "There's some errors in it." So she's working on those, and we'll ship that data back up to the Census Bureau and get that all taken care of, so all the census tracks are completely accurate. And a few folks get the Mac emails that I do, but there's a Mac still in wage benefit survey, I think you mentioned it a little bit ago, they're starting with the sheriff deputies. I'm signed up for the March 10th training webinar, so we'll see what information comes out of that, hopefully. It sounds like Mac's going to try to be a clearinghouse for all this wage survey information, so we'll see how that goes. They're starting with the deputies, because that's the one thing that all counties have in common, and the deputy roles are pretty similar from county to county, so that's where they're starting, so we'll see how that turns out. Speaking of sheriff's office, 2016 Dodge Challenger with 142,000 miles, our family, Civic Court Family Division wants to pick that up and use that for their vehicles, apparently even older. So that's going to get transferred over there, the Family Division vehicle almost likely be sold, so if anybody does know the age or the mileage on that one, we'll be out there and build it. And Joe's question, also, the public station center perhaps is March 12, 2021, we'll get indications out of next week. We're still planning the event. But playing, I talked to Rick recently, the Washington, the New York, the Bay of Lake News, and I'm trying to, and we're still not able to do that. Take a look at this, kind of a one-shot deal for the public to take a look at, hoping this is going to go live, which will be after the 12, and not do live until the actual transfer of the vehicle back to that. This is still kind of another chance for the public to get into this chat, so. And that's it, so that'll be all, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Correspondents, you're all that have been here, they need to put it to us. Are we having other partners or other correspondents?
Absolutely.
We'll open the floor back up to public comment. Not seeing anybody come forward. Public comment, DA's not in court.
Probert?
No.
Musta?
Oh, no, CWP, you're here this week. You've got, that, you know, the request, I'm here for Lori, and you have the court of, looking at. Looking at.
Townsend?
I don't want to really, with my, I have good news for two commissioners here. The, his library card, it's going to cost $25 if they're not in the county, the mountain, living up, it was $25, not $20. But the Rotary Club in Madden is going to be funding those for any children within the Madden School District that are over in, in the, the Sofi County, because part of the Madden School District is in the Sofi County. So the kids that live close to Madden can't go to the Madden Library unless they pay $25 to the park. So the Rotary Club is going to fund that, so any child that is part of the Madden School can get a library card. So they voted down, Monday night, at the library, uh, tried to do that one, which was good news to you both.
How do they contact them to do that?
What?
How do they? How do they contact them to get that?
Just go to the library, the library will keep the records, and then they'll notify. Sorry, we've got too much business, so, so.
No fee.
No chair. Thank you.
None.
Bush?
Yes, but can the county, you know, everyone, you guys, that need to be, that, Walter and Dolph, okay? Yeah.
Devoe?
No. No. Uh, it's kind of like you getting that today, they're still doing a lot of great things, have a lot of good projects down in that area, I'll update you more later in the night. Uh, the airport authority, uh, we have an opening, I'm hoping that each hour will be able to send somebody forward to fill that position. And just around that idea, Phil Hall here, who's a member of the airport authority, just like to say, oh, just kidding.
You what?
That's a deal.
Taylor?
I attended the conservation district, they're busy with their winter workshops and getting ready for their spring fee sales, but that's it. Or not.
Musta?
No.
Townsend?
I just wanted to comment on the resolution of the past tonight, on the Sanctuary City, and just to let the other commissioners know that, that I had a lot of fighting with myself, thinking to do. This is nothing that I wanted to take lightly. This is not a light thing, in my estimation, and so I bounced different things off of some other commissioners, and, and, you know, it's nothing, it's not a decision I like to make overnight, or just because, just on the surface of it, I had some things I had to resolve in my mind. First, I had to resolve this sanctuary thing, as to what a sanctuary was. I just wanted to let, let people know that what helped me was what President Trump said in the State of the Union address, when he addressed the sanctuary cities and things. He said this at the end of it, he said, "The United States of America should be a sanctuary for law-abiding Americans, not criminal aliens." And that got me to thinking that night, that really, we're not a sanctuary that is a sanctuary for gun carriers necessarily, and I'm a longtime concealed guy, but we're a sanctuary because first, we've got a sheriff that takes care of people, and people can feel safe in our community because he knows what the Second Amendment is, and he had to raise his hand to uphold that when he was elected and sworn in office. We've got a prosecutor, an assistant prosecutor, that uses prosecutorial discretion in all of their cases, and they're both Second Amendment advocates, I know they are personally, and, and we all up here, we raised our hand to uphold the Constitution of the United States when we were sworn in, and I was thinking, let's just not do this as a second thing, because we've already done that, but I'm thinking that our county is, yes, a sanctuary set aside, really for God, that's what sanctuary means, for the protection of the citizens, so that my wife can take my children to Walmart and not have some maniac go in there without the realization that there might be somebody around caring that knows what they're doing. And so we feel a lot safer in this county, and so I came to grips with that, with the help of some people, that the sanctuary is not for the right to carry, that's not it. It's our right to carry has provided a sanctuary for this county, and I really appreciate the stand of all of these commissioners in the nine-zero vote, all you people that came and spoke with your presence tonight, and also for the sheriff and our prosecutor. So I just wanted to get that off my chest, so thank you for letting me think through this and come to this conclusion.
Thank you. For those of you who aren't here often, I usually end my comments with a quote from a past president, and tonight, this is a very appropriate quote, after we've adopted the Second Amendment Sanctuary County Resolution. This is from Teddy Roosevelt. Let us speak courteously, deal fairly, and keep ourselves armed and ready. Thank you. Thank you. For those of you who aren't here often, I usually end my comments with a quote from a past president, and tonight, this is a very appropriate quote, after we've adopted the Second Amendment Sanctuary County Resolution. This is from Teddy Roosevelt. Let us speak courteously, deal fairly, and keep ourselves armed and ready. Thank you. Thank you. For those of you who aren't here often, I usually end my comments with a quote from a past president, and tonight, this is a very appropriate quote, after we've adopted the Second Amendment Sanctuary County Resolution. This is from Teddy Roosevelt. Let us speak courteously, deal fairly, and keep ourselves armed and ready. Thank you. Thank you.